Okay. Sorry, we're running late this evening. We were down at the school board and have a special school board meeting this evening. So, sorry with the late, the council meetings starting late tonight. But we had conflicting meetings that we needed to attend. So, I apologize for the late start for our city council meeting this evening. That said, I'm gonna go ahead and start the city council. I ask you to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Julie Rollcall, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Gorley.
I'm here, but my microphone's not.
Counselor Coleman. Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Let the record show, we have six present, we actually will have seven present, Susan, Counselor Coleman will be here a little later on. She is at the council meeting, or not council meeting, the school board meeting. So she will be here this evening. So show her on record as being here, but that said, will you go ahead and do the online instructions, please?
Right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask, speak, please choose the corner. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time that people not repeat a previous speaker. Instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor slash chairperson. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thank you. I will move on to recognition of visitors and hearing petitions before we hear folks to be in talk. Apparently we got a new officer, so let's take over chief.
Yes, council, I appreciate the opportunity. As we. As we, the recent path, we've been getting all of our new officers here at council. Get a chance to see them, meet them, and interact with him a little bit. And so our most recent hire is Savannah Brad. Savannah comes to us out of Salem. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the city manager to go ahead and swear Savannah in. And we're excited for her and the opportunities she brings us.
Savannah, if you could come forward and we'll have you stand right in front of Mr. Springman over here. And then if you can turn and look at me this way, your family can see you at the same time. This, so you can follow along, I'm gonna read it word for word and ask you to repeat after me.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, please. I, Savannah Brad.
I, Savannah Brad.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home and the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home and the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
On behalf of the city, welcome aboard.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, I'll have recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. Any of those would like to come forth before the council to be heard, please come forth. I'll need to give you a name and address for the record.
My name's Lori Martin. Sit on. I live in Brownsville 375 Sunset Lane, Brownsville. I work here in Sweet Home. I've lived here in Sweet Home for the last 28 years until this last six months I've moved to Brownsville. My home is here in Sweet Home. I work here in Sweet Home. My children, parents, family, friends, all live here in Sweet Homes. This is my home. What I'm here today for, and this is very uncomfortable for me, I'm not a public speaker. This is not my thing, but I'm concerned about the mask mandate that's being handed down soon. I would like to know if there's a way we can have a discussion about that, a town meeting about it, something to see what we can do. Because the people of Sweet Home does not want this. We don't want the mask in the schools. We proved that last night at the meeting. There was tons of people that were not able to make it to that meeting. Just the pure outcry of people and what's happening. It is unconstitutional, just as we swore in that officer a few minutes ago on the Constitution. I sincerely believe it is unconstitutional what is happening here in the state of Oregon. And I want to know what we can do to have a discussion about that, to see if we can figure out something that Sweet Home can do. I know other towns are pushing back, other city councils are pushing back. There's gotta be something we can do, at least a conversation. And that is why I'm here for today.
You wanna take it or you want me?
Either or.
Okay. We are, from the city level, we are working on a resolution that is gonna put our position regarding the mask mandate for the city. Okay? We are very cautious on our resolution because it involves way beyond just the city. It involves a lot of what we do as a community on a whole, from the state level. So, and I can let the city manager enlighten us a little bit about some of the things, the effect on that, what we gotta be careful of. But we will be coming out with a resolution with our position regarding the mask mandate. As far as the school, unfortunately, even with what our position is, we don't have any, we're powerless with the school district. So it is up to the school board, it is gonna be up to them to what they do and their decision. We just cannot tell the school board what to do. I mean, I'd love to be able to have that ability, but we don't. So, that's kind of our position on that. You know, I think it is coming down the turnpike real fast with our resolution, so.
And may I ask when that resolution you think will be available to the public?
I'm working on this, it's been working.
I'll be working with the mayor to put a draft together, which would hopefully appear at the next, on the next agenda.
On the 24th?
Yeah, two weeks.
Okay. So can we get something on the agenda to have a discussion so people can come and speak? And so you can see what the actual people of Sweet Home are wanting, to hear their voice.
On the next council meeting, everybody is welcome to come and sit in and listen to the resolution as we address it.
Okay, and so people will be able to speak like I am today?
Yes. Every citizen has a right to come before council to be heard. We never reject anybody unless they're out, they get out of line, then that's an old different story. But we allow all our citizens to communicate their feelings and their opinion and their position, so. And then we greatly appreciate that, because we want to know what our citizens wants and say.
And I also would like to say that I have the utmost respect for everybody here. I understand that you guys have a lot in the background that we don't understand how that works. All I can say is that, from what I'm hearing from all the people in Sweet Home that I've talked to, that have come to me and it's like, I'm not doing the mask, I'm not doing this. People are mad, they're upset, as they say, we the people are pissed, and they are. And we're not doing this again, and we want to do it right. We don't want to be doing it wrong. That's why I'm here today.
I'll let our city manager kinda give you a quick overview of everything that's involved regarding it. And so that everybody knows the whole story behind everything. So it's not just, we can't let emotions dictate our decisions. There's so much involved in what we do that you cannot let emotions dictate your decisions, so.
So, is there a way to have maybe a special meeting that we can discuss these things? So that everybody understands what is going on and why we can't do this and why we can't. So maybe it would calm people down, so if they make that decision to wear a mask or not to wear a mask, they understand everything.
Go ahead and.
Regardless of what one's personal feelings are of the mask mandate, every legal scholar is in agreement, including the state Republican Party, that these mandates are legal and lawful. Does that make them right? That's every, every individual's gonna have a slightly different take on that. The good thing is, as the city, we have no power over any type of enforcement. And we have said from the very beginning that the city does not enforce any kind of mask mandates. The governor has empowered other entities to do that, but not the city. So we've taken the stance from day one, for lack of a better term, it's not really our business. It's not what we do, it's not what we're supposed to do. Do we, and are we going to try to educate when we run into these situations? Absolutely. Are we concerned about public health? Absolutely. But we're not, we are not empowered in any way to do any kind of enforcement regarding the mask mandate.
So, again, is there a possibility of having a meeting for the people to be able to understand all this? Or a special, or, or at, I don't understand how this works, but on the agenda? Or I know that it would take up probably the whole meeting, and that's why I'm saying maybe something separately, just like the school board meeting last night was out of hand a little bit, because everybody was there and wanted to speak. And they were in a little room with, they could only have five people in there. I get that it gets out of order and people need to stay calm and have what they have to say, say, and be done with that and not cause problems, all for that. But I just think people need to be heard right now, especially because it's just Turner, I mean, first the kids, now it's coming down that we're gonna be indoor with masks. And people are upset. And so that's what I'm asking the board is, can we have some sort of special meeting before the people do it on their own? Before somebody, group, somewhere is gonna go, hey, we're gonna have a parents' meeting and we're gonna do our own thing, because they're not listening to us. I don't want that, because we need the information and the knowledge that you all have of what happens in the background, because we don't know. So, we don't understand all that stuff. All we understand is what's happening to us out here. So if you guys control this meeting and give us the information we need and hear our voices, everybody's gonna feel better about that. And then we can make an educated decision on what we're doing about wearing a mask, not wearing masks, send our kids to school, not send them to school, all those things.
I don't have a problem with a town hall meeting. No, it's not a problem.
Yeah, we can do that. We can set it up.
You now can, once she's finished speaking.
I'm finished, and I thank you for hearing me, and I hope we can do something together.
Counselor Richards may have a question.
Sorry, counsel, just microphone, sorry.
Thank you for coming tonight. It means a lot. I do appreciate it. And I just think what she was trying to answer, I think we just need to have a discussion. I mean, let's be honest, it's a part of the council doing anything. And I get people that are just very frustrated with what's going on. And it doesn't feel like we care as a body. I think that I'm seeing more of that, so. But thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got a, we had a meeting with Representative Jamie Kate Saturday at Sandy Park. And Senator Girard was there, and I asked him point blank, does she have the right to mandate for us to wear masks at school? And they said, yes, she does, and they can't do anything about it. Now, they wrote a letter to Governor Brown. I read that, and it says that they wanna make it so that it's optional. She's not gonna do anything about that. She's just gonna let it go. Well, anyway, that, but that's we, that's the way I understand it. We have no say in.
Right.
Not here.
No.
No say down there, and so it's kind of a frustrating thing. We all, I think a lot of us want to stay.
Right. And so at that point, the parents have to step in and make that choice to not send their children to school and homeschool them. That's our freedom to do so, which is, if we have an influx of that, that's gonna be bad for our city, for everything too. If we have a huge amount of exit from our enrolling in our school and people going, I've gotten 30 phone calls today of people saying, will you homeschool my kids? I'll pay you. Do you know anybody who will homeschool my kids? Because I can't quit work. I don't know what to do. I'm not gonna have my kid in a mask all day. And I know this is for the school board. I'm just saying, people are getting very upset and they're gonna start taking things in their own hands and having their own meetings, their own things. And I would rather hear from our council how everything works and how we can do this. And so I would love to have, as you called it, a town hall meeting, some sort of meeting that we can address that, so we don't waste time in the council meeting for the important things that you guys are doing on this end, and it could be designated for that.
We are, I'm open to a town hall meeting and letting the voices be heard. I'm nothing against that. Counselor Richards is out of line by making a statement that we don't care as a council. That is not true. I personally have made efforts in trying to take care of this mask mandate, and a lot of other things has transpired. There's a lot of things goes on behind the scenes that a lot of citizens are not aware of, that has major repercussions to our community and our citizens. And if he gets his facts straight, he would understand that. But apparently he doesn't give his facts straight, and he makes statements that the council doesn't care about what the citizens think in this whole mask mandate and everything that has gone on the last two, almost two years. It's not true. We do care. Again, we don't let our emotions dictate our decisions. We cannot do that, because we make one wrong decision as a council regarding a lot of things that goes on from Salem, it could be very detrimental to our community. So, that said.
Just as an example, we've worked really hard to obtain funding for our wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And, and your governor, our governor has line art and veto, so we had to be very careful in how we acted and what we did. So there, there's a bigger picture. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't hear you out, absolutely.
It's things like that, that the people of Sweet Home need to understand.
Sure, absolutely.
Of why things aren't happening or why we're not getting responses. And that's why I think if we had a meeting where those things can be discussed and told to the people. Because, I mean, the bigger picture is, you know, we're losing and giving away our freedoms in a lot of ways. Because I'm on the fence about that. I can't say they're being taken away, because we're, we're giving away. I'm not giving mine away no more. I'm done. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I have a voice and I'm gonna, I've put my line in the sand. And so I'm gonna be out here doing this right here. I wanna talk to people, I wanna do it respectfully. I, like I said, I respect you all. I know you guys put a ton of unpaid hours doing this right here. I know that, and I appreciate it, and I want it to keep happening. I just want the people to know what you guys do on a good and whole also, and hearing us out, so you can understand where we're at and what the people of Sweet Home want for Sweet Home. So, thank you for hearing me.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I just update a little bit of what Counselor Trask said? The representative and the senator also said that they would like the people to put pressure where pressure is needed, that they could not help in and of themselves. Legislative session is over, so the people have to be the one to put the pressure where it's needed.
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your statement. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Nan White. I live at 911 Sixth Avenue. I've lived there for 12 years. My problem tonight is, I have a neighbor who really is an eyesore and a problem for the neighborhood. He has disabled vehicles, he has car parts stacked around. I have talked to code enforcement officer numerous times on the phone and by email. I'm sure he's doing everything he can. There is open storage of garbage. There's, right now, there's a car across the sidewalk that has been there for over two months. The car does not run. There is a dumpster full of garbage, big commercial dumpster, full of garbage in front of the house that's been there for over a month. The smell's getting pretty bad. The neighbor behind him will not come. She's afraid retaliation. She can't use her backyard because of the smell of human waste coming from the fifth wheel that's parked beside the house. I said, I've talked to code enforcement so many times, I'm embarrassed to keep calling. It's kind of like I'm the old bitchy neighbor that's the only one that's doing anything. But I have to look at this every day. I have to smell it. I can't walk down the sidewalk without going across the street. The codes against this don't seem to have enough force, enough teeth to do anything. It's been going on for well over a year, and the situation hasn't really changed. The vehicles changed, the pile of garbage changed, but it goes from here to here. It goes from this old pickup to this old car, and it's just rotating. So, since the codes don't seem to be accomplishing anything, perhaps the codes need to be revisited, maybe strengthened, some more teeth added to it. So I don't pay a ton of property tax to live next door to a wrecking yard and a garbage dump.
You have any information on this regarding?
Yeah, I think Claire does.
So I've spoken with our code compliance officer, and I believe I left a message for you. I didn't get, wasn't able to get through on your phone today, because I did get a message from you this morning about the issue. And so I've spoken with Ethan about it. The, there certainly is a problem at the, at the property. The issue we're dealing with is that it's a repeat offender. So, a year ago or more, there was compliance, there was code actions that happened, and there was enforcement. The, the property owner got it into, got it cleaned up according to our codes, and then has, has caused a problem again. And so we're going through the process again. It's one of the unfortunate realities with code enforcement is that when you have repeat offenders, and just because somebody cleans it up one month doesn't mean it's not gonna become a mess again. And so it requires us to go through our enforcement action again. What we are, and Ethan is still fairly new at the job, what we have been focusing on is shortening the, shortening the warning period for repeat offenders. That if you're a repeat offender, you don't get as, as much time to correct it before a citation comes your way. And so that is, that is happening now. Unfortunately, the reality of this though is it's, it's private property that we, we have to balance the city's codes with personal property rights. So we give them, the, the main reason why we wanna make sure that we do this by the book and by our codes is to make sure that the courts don't throw it out. And so when we do have a case like this, we wanna make sure that our, everything is in order. So that when it comes before the judge, you can say, yeah, the city gave you fair warning and you have to pay the citation. Or the city can go ahead and abate your property and so forth. So it is a, a case, you know, there's work being done. It again, unfortunately, is not quick.
Well, it just, just seems like it's taken an awfully long time.
And again, it's, it's because of the repeat actions. If somebody cleans up their property, we, we typically stop that enforcement. And then once they make a mess again, then we have to start it up again.
So, Claire, I have a question. So, didn't we strengthen that law, that code last year? We talked about shortening the times?
So that, that was purely on administrative level. We, we didn't actually change the ordinances themselves when it comes to open storage and nuisances and things like that. Certainly, that's an option for reviewing. In my opinion, the code is not the problem so much as just making sure that we give people less time when they are repeat offenders.
So, once we did that, that was just for one case? It wasn't like, when did we shorten those times?
No, 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 we.
We shortened the times. That's why I thought the whole process.
Are they, in the, you mean in the ordinance? I'm not aware of any changes in the actual ordinance. We did talk about.
To shorten the time.
We talked about in, in the enforcement, when it comes to staff working through the ordinances, that we were gonna shorten the time when we have.
So is that still in?
Yeah, and that's, and that's being done for all enforcement actions, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Go ahead.
So, Jeff, is it, is the chief, is there anything that, walking sidewalks or anything like that, that the office could help with?
I will actually have to go up by the house. I know there was a dumpster in there. It was my belief it was from the sanitation, and they were actually cleaning, in the process of cleaning some of the property up. But I haven't been up there in about a week, and so we'll have to swing up there and see if there's anything that outside of code enforcement that we can assist with.
I drive by it every day. It is an eyesore, and I have seen officers there, so I'm curious as to what's transpiring.
Okay, I'll check into it.
Thank you. Name and address, sir.
Vince Adams, 809 Mountain View Road. First, I'd like to say I agree with the lady that was up here first on with the town meeting, possibly, you know, to get a widespread notice out to the city so that people can know that's coming. Maybe change the venue like you guys have done before for special events like this. So, the main reason I'm here today is I've gotten wind of some homeless camp stuff in the planning gonna be happening here in the city of Sweet Home. And I want the city council to know that everybody I've talked to is totally against it. One of the reasons we're totally against this is because of the size of it. The location is gonna be inside the city limits from what I understood, and it's gonna attract. It's gonna attract like flies, and it's gonna be a problem. It's gonna exacerbate the problem that we have now. We don't need something that big, and we don't need something paid for with our taxpayer dollars. It needs to be done somewhere else, outside of the city limits, and not with my tax dollars. My tax dollars should be used for paying his salary and his team's salary. It should be used for infrastructure within the city, streets, plumbing, water, those types of things. Doesn't need to be made or used for a homeless camp. Those people make a choice. Some of them are down and out, they get the handout, they get the hand up, and they move on. The majority of them do not do that. You take away their dignity by giving them the handout, if you don't receive something in return. I learned that from a 72-year-old woman back in the 90s in Haiti, who ran the Baptist mission, and she had been doing it all her life. If someone comes in and you give them a service, they need to give you some type of payment, whether it's a bushel of vegetables, a chicken, or a service done on the grounds. And you're not gonna get that. You're gonna get the handout, and then that's gonna be the end of it. You guys are gonna have all these little programs for these folks to come in, sign in, get into this, you know, little homeless camp. And I haven't read the whole thing yet. I just read the first blurb that I saw. And they're gonna do that just enough, just the minimum to get by. Then when you kick them out during the daytime, where are they gonna go? They're all gonna be in town. What are they gonna do while they're in town? Lay out here on the corner like half of them do now and beg for money? Then you're just giving them money, you're just giving, giving, given, and people are tired of it. People don't want it here. Let the big cities handle it. Figure out something different, but don't put a homeless camp of that size within our city. That's the request from everybody that I've talked to, and that's my personal request for my family.
I don't think we have came to any decision. There's nothing that's been finalized. I think we have a homeless problem in our community. We are looking at all our avenues and options out there to what we can do to address this problem. I think that's where we're at right at this point.
Yeah, and I understand that. I'm trying to get a jump on it, because I know it's coming. So that's why I'm here tonight, and I'll, every time you guys have something along these lines, I'm gonna show up and try and bring a few more people, because we don't want it.
I appreciate it.
We understand. The thing is, we understand there's folks out there, and I've talked to some of them. Not just here in Sweet Home, but in other towns when I run across them. There are some out there that, yeah, they lost their job. They've been down out or living out of their cars or whatever. And some of those people, they know that they can work. They just need that hand, that that helping hand, not the handout, but the helping hand. And once they get that helping hand to help them get back on their feet, then they're off and running, but the majority are not. So anyway, thank you for listening to me and good getting your laps in. I see you in the morning.
Thanks. Thanks for your testimony. Anybody else would like to come forth, be heard? Name and address for the record. I need address.
Oh, two three nine seven Northwest Kings, Corvallis, Oregon.
Okay, thank you.
And so my question to you is this, what are the city council's plans with the mandates that are coming?
What mandates?
With the mask mandates.
We just talked about we
I must have missed it. I came in late. Sorry.
We're going to have a town hall meeting where we're going to be addressing with a resolution, probably our next meeting. I'm hoping for a town hall meeting to let the citizens be heard and we will also lay out a lot of stuff that from the council standpoint that we're faced with as to why we don't just jump and make decisions because there's a lot of repercussions behind our decisions. And so we will have a town hall meeting. It will we'll make sure it's in our local news sources and everybody in the whole entire community is welcome to come. We will have it at a location that we can handle that size of venue. I won't be here, but
Specifically be to formally make a resolution?
Well, it'll be a discussion. We're going to make a resolution regarding that, but we're also going to have a town hall meeting discussing a lot of what's all involved and why we make certain, we do certain things.
Okay.
From a city standpoint, the best thing in regards to just what Council Sanchez had talked about. Voice heard what you can do as citizens from state capital side of things. You know, we can only do so much at city level. Some things come straight from Salem that will need to be addressed and the voices boy voices heard there more so than what we do here at city level. So
Okay, I have some people on the phone. Is it okay if they ask you some questions? Is that okay if they state their name?
That's why we have a
Yeah, we they have
We have to have it online.
Yeah, we have instructions that they can call in if they wanted to take part. Yeah, we have Colin and we're broadcast online. They could they could take part.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else to come forth this evening? Okay. We will now move into the because we moved the recognition of visitors up front because of the swearing in of officers will now go to consent agenda. Council directive. Most in second, all fair by roll call, please.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
Counsel Richards? Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counsel Gerson?
At the Rocker Show, seven eyes, no nays, approval of consent agenda. Moving on to old business, police department traffic data review.
A lot of discussion in our community about a lot of topics, but one of the ones that we hear about the most over the past several months has been traffic in our community and speeding. So we've been working really hard to put some data together and and Chief's going to go over that for you. We included it the data in the last council packet. So you'd have some time to look over it. Marinate on that and develop some questions for for the chief. So feel free to hit them hard with whatever questions you come up with. There's a bus just drove by.
Yeah, dude, thank you.
So I'll turn it over. Yeah, I'm going to get it.
It's called teamwork and leadership.
We're going to get a speeding ticket on the way home now.
I appreciate the council for having this topic on the agenda. I know I included the information like the city manager said last last week and was hoping to just have a either can be a brief or lengthy discussion on it. I think the traffic heard for I'd hate to say it longer than a few months. Probably a year or so. That has been one of the most complained about topics is traffic in our downtown area specifically. But we could also include probably all along Highway 20 within our city limits for that. And so we've really been doing or trying to do a solid job of collecting data to figure out how we can we as the police department can help address this, these issues. I told you in our, I think it was the one of the council work sessions that, you know, we were going to try to move the needle on this during during this year. And hopefully some of what we talk about will show that that we're trying to do that. Now I'll put a caveat on it that it's the speed issues that we're seeing and the volume of traffic that we're seeing is is it's not something that just enforcement itself is going to be able to take care of and and fix, but I think enforcement is going to be a large part of that. We'll start with and feel free to jump in at any point in time if you have. We all know about our traffic radar signs that are up and are collecting the data. What what has been included is June's data. It's the most recent data I had at the time. We have July's that I will include in next month, my next council meetings. Report. My intent is just to kind of keep including. We have the data. You'll see two things usually to pop out at you. The first of all is the the volume of traffic in a month's time in both locations that we have the the traffic signs up and running, which is the 900 block of Main Street and the 3200 block of Main Street. The amount of traffic I was actually quite surprised by, you know, 300,000 vehicles passing those locations in a month is a lot of traffic for a community of 10,000 people or just under. And so that that's one of the first things that jump out at us. And then as we broke the speeds down, we were initially disappointed by what we what we saw, you know. We and some of the charts will you have them all, but the the speeds we're focusing on are five miles an hour and plus over the actual posted speed limit. So out on the 3200 block, it's a 45 mile an hour speed zone. So we're really focused on those that are traveling 50 miles an hour plus. And then in the 900 block, which is a 25 mile an hour speed zone, we're looking at the 30 mile an hours plus and the percentage of vehicles that are traveling over that. In the 900 block, 32% of the vehicles are traveling five miles an hour or more over the the posted speed limit. So 32% of the vehicles are doing 30 miles or or more. And then in the 3200 block, it's six, it's 16%. And so that really led us down the road of what what's this data actually telling us? And is it just a simple speed issue or is there some some player, what's the word, the traffic calming issues that could be at play or not traffic calming issues in play? And so the community service officer, Sean Morgan, actually came up with the idea. We put a radar trailer on the 1100 block of Main Street to try to figure out, is there a difference? And we had it there for just over a week and there was actually a significant amount of difference. The the vehicles that we were considered speeding five miles or more dropped to 19%. And so, which is still bad. So I'm not not going to say those are great numbers. It's still bad, but we are seeing some improvement. You know, is that improvement from people just slowing down? But there's also when you start approaching 10th Avenue, we all know Sweet Home, there are some traffic calming issues that are taking place. The road narrows. And I think that actually has some some plays a role into this. And so we're kind of reassessing on where we're hoping to focus some of our efforts on the traffic enforcement because quite honestly, we have finite resources and we only have a certain amount of man hours we can we can put to officers running traffic. And so the well, I'll call them transition zones from when there's a transition from a speed limit. That's going to be our initial level of focus in in our traffic. Specifically as vehicles are coming in off of the coming in eastbound from Lebanon, we're going to focus on those and when they transition to the 35 mile an hour speed zone, we're going to be looking at that and making sure those speeds are at a correct level. And those coming off of Holly Road onto Main Street, we we did some data gathering on those. They were still speeding as they got to the the 900 block, the ninth avenue. That's really, that's a block away. And so those areas of transition where we're lowering a speed limit, we're going to try to focus on some, we'll call it education because I just hate to say enforcement, but some some targeted education in in those areas to hopefully gain a little bit more compliance. And like I said, I think it's just a our enforcement action is going to be just one piece of the puzzle. Fortunately, we have engaged with ODOT and those conversations will continue to try to determine some some more calming issues as we come come into Sweet Home. And really, what I'm most focused on right now is not just taking the whole chunk of how are we going to lower all the speed along highway? But let's take it in sections. How can we lower it in the downtown area first and then try to 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 work out further east? Our enforcement effort, there's some charts in there on our level of traffic enforcement. It's gone up significantly since last year. And we're on a pace for the previous years that we've had it. And so that's what we're going to be focused on. Anytime we have officers that are available, they'll be assigned into certain traffic aspects, really try to get a a handle on on what all is taking place with our speed. Not, I'm not a huge fan of writing everybody a ticket that's speeding. I think education has to be kind of a case by case situation, but I think some education can go a long ways. Presence can go a long ways and it but it's going to be, it's not going to be a quick, quick fix if we can fix it, but we will keep running the data, keep presenting the data to you and keep changing when we can. When we see something different, when we try something different, we'll keep you posted. And one thing we will do is is if something doesn't work, we'll try something else. And I think that's really all we can do. I'm hoping that, you know, as ODOT comes in and does some of their traffic study that they'll also be able to shed some light on. They may have other ideas on traffic calming techniques that that we haven't thought about. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I got a, I would like to say I'm surprised on the numbers, but I'm not. It's amazing how many, when you go down below 40 miles an hour, how many people are going ridiculous speeds? Somebody going 90, 91 to 95 on a 25 mile an hour speed zone, that's that's ridiculous. It's crazy. I mean, I'm not blaming you guys because you only do so much, but we knew it's there. We've known it for a long time. And 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 I think you're right, it is getting better and I appreciate that. I see them stalking people more often than they were, but now we're down again much more. You know, it's hard to do. I understand that 100%. So you guys are doing as best you can.
Well, and we are trying to figure out what some of the outliers are, you know, some of those outliers could be late at night. I would anticipate most of those are. Some could be emergency services vehicles going different location. We just don't know on that. We don't get snapshots of it. So we're just we we try to see a pattern.
So the the sign at the subway is gone.
Yes, it is. We've had some setbacks. It was the second sign taken out by a motorhome. So
Maybe the red light kept burnt burned out.
No, I know. They're LED, so they got we got some life left in them. But yes, and so Public Works is actually trying to determine a different set, a different way to mount them, maybe an offset mount because they were actually mounted. There's certain specifications on where the signs have to be mounted and they were mounted there, but apparently we need to to fudge some specifications somewhere, a little a little off the highway a little bit more.
So it seems like when we've seen these kind of numbers before, that it was broke down in time frame of the day. So is that something we can't collect with these machines?
No.
Sorry. Is that something that these machines can't do?
Uh, no, they actually are supposed to do that. We have had some issues specifically in the June data with the the times getting getting off. And as we we've checked, we believe that the significant heat that we had in those affected either the battery or the actual board in there and either reset the time or or just the times off. And so we're hoping that improves as as we go on.
Okay, so my second question. Are these machines capable of giving tickets?
No, nor are we authorized as a community. The legislature offer only authorizes certain communities that have like the red light cameras, which are typically what what they are. There's only a certain number of communities in the state that that are allowed to do that in certain locations as well. So you're safe most of the time.
Safe in Sweet Home. Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so to me, this is two thirds of the traffic. People are going over the speed limit. So this would be a unsafe crosswalk at the subway intersection. When I spoke with Senator Gerard, he said that we need to give him a list of one to three crosswalks and I wasn't sure if that was something that you were supposed to do or somebody else was supposed to do, but this is really good information for me for that one to be at least, I mean, 50 to 94 mile per hour. That's
Yeah, yeah. And if
So we've reached out after the last meeting, we reached out to our engineer of record. Their traffic engineer has been on vacation. So if we wanted to both get a dollar amount for that study of what it would take to do a traffic study on Highway 20 and also work with them on sharing the data and figuring out which ones we should include in that list. So hopefully this week we'll get some kind of feedback from the chairs.
Okay, because I was just, he just mentioned something that he would like to have that information, but if the person's been out of the office, I get that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. A request for council action, premium pay for employees working during COVID-19.
So this begins on page 21 of your packet. As we discussed at the last meeting, one of the appropriate uses or allowed uses of the ARPA funds is appropriate pay for for staff who worked through COVID. In your discussions, you were comfortable with a 5% number. So I believe we have brought that back to you. If Brandon wants to add anything to that.
The only thing I would add is is the RCA talks about the actual dollar amounts. We've gone through and refined the dollars to make sure that, you know, based on your recommendation or
Preference?
Preference. The 5% figure was was is what's presented here. So page two of that RCA says that total premium pay plus associated retirement contributions would be $141,055. So that would be the ARPA, that would be the ARPA funds that if this were to pass, you you would be tying up for this purpose and would come out of our 2 million, 2.2 million dollar total allocation. And then certainly I can answer specific questions if it happens.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think I was on the phone last time we had this and did I misunderstand? I thought that it was $40,000 and it's actually $141,000? Or did something change? Maybe I
We did add this figure adds the retirement contributions to that that each employee would receive as part of as with any pay item, they receive a retirement contribution. We weren't ever as low as 40,000. So I don't know if it kind of cut out in that moment. But but this is a slightly higher, I think, the without the retirement contributions, you're looking in the low 130,000 range.
It may have been the premium using city funds at 35,000 and the rest is money that comes into us. I think that may have been the difference.
So there's two components of this specific request for council action. The first part is reviewing the premium pay application. Or this, excuse me, the ARPA pay or the ARPA money allocation. The second part of this is there are six city employees who do not qualify under the American Rescue Plan Act provisions, which specify that any premium pay contribution cannot raise total salary above 150% of the state's average wage. There are six employees in the city that that would apply to in this case. So the secondary consideration of this of this RCA is whether or not the council would like to give those six employees premium as well, knowing that that would come from the city's general dollars, general budget.
Other questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Brendan, from the general fund, we know what that is. What does that mean specifically? I mean, are you saying that the 35,000? What does that mean specifically? I mean, are you saying that the thirty-five thousand is going to come from a variety of?
It would be, it would be a variety of places. There are, there is one person in the general fund that this would apply to. Two, three people in the internal service funds that this would apply to. Two people in the police department fund, fund two hundred. I think that's it. Did I get six?
Got six.
That's, yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I I just don't think it would be, I just don't think it would be fair to leave six people out of that that process. It's one kind of thing, correct? I I just, I think that it would be unfair to to not include them all. I mean, it doesn't seem, to me, it doesn't seem quite right, you know? So maybe that's who acted about.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we're getting some feedback online that people logged in or having a difficult time hearing the council. So if we could all maybe scoot your microphones a little bit closer, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think we are all aware that our staff worked really hard through COVID, through the fire season. They have just gone above and beyond the call of duty. I mean, it's incredible what they've been doing. And so I I think being fair with all the staff is appropriate and I also would like to move for option three.
I will second that motion.
First of all, do we have any other questions at council before we go into motions? Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Roll by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Sanchez, yes. Counselor Richards. Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley.
Aye.
At the record show, we have seven ayes with no nays, approval of the premium pay for employees that were working during COVID nineteen. Moving on now to new business, request for council action, twenty twenty-one overlay project contract award.
This begins on page twenty-four of your council packet. I'm going to turn this over to Trish, apparently.
Can I give you Trish Rice? Hi, Trish.
We took phase two paving project out to bid and that closed a few weeks ago. The engineer's estimate was five hundred and ninety-three thousand. The low bidder was Knife River coming in at five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So we are requesting authorization to execute the contract.
Questions of council?
So, Mr. Mayor, I did have a question about the contingency being less than fifteen percent. That's not a problem necessarily.
Honestly, it does make me a little nervous. However, we've heard at a previous council meeting that council very much wanted to stay under the six hundred thousand, so I was reluctant to ask for anything else.
Okay. So it's just a little nervous, that's all. Okay.
Any other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe that this would be a possible conflict of interest for me, so I would have to recuse myself from anything because I am on the bidders list for Knife River for truck driving.
Okay, let the abstention show for record. At this time, any other questions? Need a council directive.
So moved as recommended.
A motion second by roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, we voting on which one?
Option one.
Counselor Richards. Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Counselor Gerson.
Aye.
Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Counselor Gorley.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
At the record show, I have six ayes with one abstain, approval of the overlay project.
Thank you.
A request for council action, twenty-fourth Avenue Land Exchange Agreement.
It's on page seventy-four of the packet. About the area at North.
I am so glad to put this on the agenda. I've been working on this deal for two years and it's nice to finally have it done so, or as done as I can get it. I now pass the ball to you. So the plan with this, as we've talked about before, is that the city's property, that's the former Knife River Quarry and the county-owned former warehouse or mill property, both are areas where we would like to see some significant redevelopment in the city. The city's property is slated to become the future home of the Oregon Jamboree. If it's going to become that, it does not have nearly enough access. And so staff identified and that twenty-fourth Avenue would be the best way to get better access into those properties. Right now, the city's property can only be accessed by Zelkova and Clark Mill, which are relatively small rights of way and have a lot of property owners along them. So expanding those rights of way is significantly more difficult because of the number of private properties you have to deal with. Similarly, the county mill property is accessed via Tamarack and Eighteenth Avenue, which also would be difficult to widen and get them to be any significant size. And so the solution has been to, if we take twenty-fourth Avenue, which right now is a two-lane stub street that is essentially less than a block long about and goes north from Main Street and dead ends at the railroad tracks. If we widen that and get a rail crossing across the railroad tracks and then have a right of way dedicated to it through the county's mill property, that provides a as big a right of way as we could want. The current plan is one for for a four-lane road with a middle turn lane during much of it. This means that we need to find some way of getting it wider at Main Street, the twenty-fourth Avenue and Main Street intersection. Fortunately, there are only three property owners that we would have to deal with and one of them is us. And so that would be Reliable Welding on the corner, the city's public works yard. And then the county has a small portion of that is just north of the of the city public works yard. And so we've been going, working with Reliable Welding to come about, come to an agreement on swapping land. Essentially, they would give us forty feet of their frontage on twenty-fourth Avenue, which we would dedicate to the road. In exchange, they would get a sixty-foot strip, a sixty-foot wide strip of the public works yard that would basically increase their land in that direction to compensate for losing that Main Street frontage. And so one of the complications in this is that under Oregon law required to have a an appraisal done. That was done and under Oregon law were required to share the cost of appraisal with with the other party. And so they will be paying half of that and we will be paying the other half. The in making the deal with them, the other conditions they were concerned about was environmental. They wanted a a an addendum that would be a, what's the word? I wrote it down in there, I see, and now I'm blanking on what it is. Robert, yeah, indemnity agreement, that's what it is. Same thing. They wanted an indemnity agreement where we essentially, both sides are not responsible for, you know, we know what the environmental state is and it's it is fine for industrial and commercial purposes. And we're not going to sue them over the condition of our property and they're not going to sue us over the condition of of theirs. So essentially that's, and then as you can see, I've got the the agreement in there for you to review with the conditions. We would leave everything status quo until there is some sort of development. And so they would keep on using their property for their purposes. We'll keep on using ours for ours. When shovels start hitting the dirt, that's when it would actually go into effect and the road would be widened and we would, they would be able to use their prop, the property that we transfer to them. And so the impacts for the city, you know, we've already paid for the appraisal. But this would also require the city, the agreement would require the city to pay one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and to cover the the recording costs and and the survey fees and the planning fees. So I would be happy to take any questions. What we're asking for here, just to be can wrap it all up, we're asking for approval of this agreement with Reliable Welding. And then we're also asking for authorization for the city manager to sign that agreement, but also to sign the planning applications for this because it will require a partition of our property and then a partition of their property. And because of the, they've asked that the property be given to them in a separate parcel. Because of the shape of the parcel, it's too long and narrow for our, for us to be able to approve that partition. And so we can give it to them in two pieces with a with a access easement down the side of one of them. And that will require, that's a conditional use that will require planning commission approval. So that's what we're asking for your authorization on and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, Claire, I'm glad that this is, also, it's been a long time. My question is that you included some conceptual of what that road would look like. Do we have any progress as far as the mill property? I know this is really early on as far as this whole development is concerned, but this is a first step right towards the development of that.
Yes, so included in a couple of things. One, the rail railroad crossing is pending. We expect by the end of August, we should have a full crossing order from ODOT. And Albany and Eastern Railroad has been very cooperative and that's basically unheard of these days to have that level of cooperation with the railroad. We consider ourselves very lucky to have that part of it pretty much done. The mill property portion, my understanding is that the county is, has included the need for land to be dedicated through that, through that property to our property in their request for proposals. And so we don't know yet who is, whose proposal will be chosen among those. But all indications are that they are very much aware of the need for this road to go through and also very much interested in having that road because, again, we've done the hard work of getting the rail crossing order approved. And that makes that property significantly more developable because you have essentially a brand-new corridor that you can deal with instead of the smaller accesses that it currently has.
Personally, I'm glad to see this done because now it quit bugging me.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any more questions. I I would want to move forward on option two.
Second that.
Motion second, hold affair by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Aye.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
At the record show, we have seven ayes with no nays, approval of the twenty-fourth Avenue Land Exchange Agreement. Next up, request for council action, water meter modernization authorization.
Page one thirty-two of your packet. The council packet, do they like to follow along?
So before you is a request for council action. We as staff have had a lot of conversations regarding the future of our water system. You as council have been very involved in those conversations. But one of the parts, one of the parts of kind of our modernization of our system is changing out our water meters. And so about a year and a half ago, probably maybe closer to two years, the city switched from purchasing census meters, your standard water meter with a little propeller on the inside that as it spins around it, it drives the the counter that's been read and and turned in through utility bill. We switched from that to an ultrasonic heater. It's better at picking up low-flow instances. So as as residential structures and and commercial structures are built with low-flow toilets, showerheads, sinks, the works, these camstrip devices do better at picking up all of the water that flows through the meter. The other benefit of those meters is they're, they're basically, they're smart meters. So they they store data for an extended period of time that when we go and what we call interrogate the meter, we can get data for a daily basis as far as what were the reads for each of those days. There's a benefit, a customer service benefit in that because what we get customers with higher utility bills and they come in, they want to know, why is my my utility bill so high? And so what we have the capability now to do is pull up a system and say, okay, here's, here's your graph, here's the your consumption over these days. Did something happen this block of days or this day specifically that maybe would account for it? And oftentimes, that's a trigger for folks to say, oh, right, I had family visiting or, oh, we filled the pool because it was a hundred and five outside, which will happen again here in the near future, apparently. Anyways, there's, there's a lot more from a customer service standpoint that these meters are, can do for us. Lastly, these meters help determine leaks across our system. So in our, with our current structure, we didn't have the capability to determine if there was a leak on a customer end. You know, oftentimes, we could see when a higher read came in thirty days later, sometimes that your usage is clearly higher. So you either use more water or maybe have a leak on your end of the meter. These meters can tell us and can alert us of of an instance of a potential leak. As staff is driving around doing their various waterline replacements, garbage pickups, whatever, they have, they can have readers in their cars that the the meters just kind of dump into a tablet. And when one of them triggers with a leak alert, then the the driver is notified on the tablet. So it does help us, help the customers again to identify leaks across our system and try to address some of the pain points for for customers. That being said, there are thirty-five meters across the city and we have been slowly rolling these out just as a general replacement. And so the average lifespan of a census meter is about ten years. Some of our meters are well past that. The average lifespan of these meters is twenty years. So there is a significant operational savings from, in a, in our switching to these meters. But additionally, you know, as time has gone, we we've just been slowly replacing them. If we have areas that are constant concern for either leaks or complaints, then we have been swapping out those meters. We've not been swapping out meters, census meters that are brand new, because that just doesn't make fiscal sense for us. But what we are looking to do now is tie off the rest of the meters. Switch to these camstraps, really build out a network that can help Public Works and Finance enhance our service offering and save us some operational funds in the long. Because again, these meters have doubled the lifespan of of the current census meters. To do that, there is a significant, I'd say, upfront cost. We are looking for the staff estimates that we would need to purchase two thousand five hundred ninety-five camstrip meters to finish the system at an estimated cost of about five hundred, five hundred five thousand dollars. There are a few ways to do this. We could continue as we are on kind of our just normal replacement cycle as a meter dies. Or as we get past kind of that ten-year prime, then we could certainly continue with the rollout and and the changeover. That will take significant time. Part of the system is, of course, with any. Part of the system is, of course, with any software based solution, you also have software costs that come with that. And so software specifically, once you get past a certain number of meters, which I think is a thousand. Sure. I think it's a thousand. The cost goes up for that top. And so we're getting near that a thousand meter mark, which is why we're coming to you to decide, do we want to continue to slow roll the process? And to replace these meters on just our normal cycle, just plow through the rest of them. To offset some of the costs, we described in the, in the request for council action that we have an existing contract with a third party that comes out once a month and reads our meters. That contract would no longer be necessary as our city staff would pick that up. So that saves approximately thirty thousand. Thirty six thousand about, that would save us thirty, about thirty six thousand a year in not having that contract. And then certainly we have, there are multiple funding ways to do this. One way is to take a loan. We could fund the five hundred five thousand using a loan. Interest rates on this type of a project are not ideal, I will say. As I listed in here, we are looking at probably about a four percent, somewhere between four and five percent interest rate. On a project like this, we've gone out and obtained two different loan options to determine what those rates would look like. And that's what they both have come back with. The other option for this project is to do this in-house. In-house can mean, mean one of two things. It can mean an interfund loan, which the city has used before. Particularly for this building. The other option is with the council having decided that we wanted to use American Rescue Plan dollars for replacement of small diameter water mains. We can take those dollars that we had originally budgeted for that project and reappropriate them toward the meters. So lots of options on the table. Ultimately, what we're looking for is these meters provide better service, better offerings, better readings. And do a whole host of better functions for the community.
This time, questions of council.
Mr. Mayor, so Brendan, according to what you said here, it's about two hundred thousand that we would sit, that we, for the small water lines, right? Inch diameter, twenty, two hundred thousand. So we're still in the pocket for three. We're still looking for three hundred thousand?
If we were to go with the route of using the funds that we budgeted for small diameter, we'd roll this project out over a couple of years. So it would still be faster than we'd anticipated in the first place. But instead of doing it all right now, we do a quarter of it now and do part of this project over three to four years. If we were to do an interfund loan and move the money over now, that's when we could just buy all of the meters that we need today. And get all the replacements done before, before our existing contract is up with the third party meeting, meter reader.
Okay. Question for Greg. So do we have the capacity to get these meters done?
Yeah, actually Dominic and, and Wes have been kind of chomping at the bit with Brandon to get going. And every meter that we get, we put them right in the ground as fast as we can.
Any other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, is this something that could maybe be funded with the infrastructure package that is possibly coming out from the feds for my first question? And then my second question, is it gonna have a cost savings for the customer or is it going to cost the customer more?
To answer question one, yes, I think is the answer potentially. I don't, we, with, with the Senate just passing that bill today. I, to be honest, I have not had time to read through the entirety of that bill. Three hundred and some odd pages. But from what I understand, there is money allocated specifically to the tune of fifty five billion dollars for water infrastructure alone. How much of that goes to little cities in the state of Oregon is a, is a certainly a question mark. So I couldn't answer with certainty, but probably yes would be my guess. I think we will know more now as, as the bill progresses over to the house side. That may take some time before passage. We'll have some time to look through this. I know that the National League of Cities and the League of Oregon Cities are certainly digging through that text. So hopefully we'll have some better guidance on that soon. Your question related to consumers specifically is that's kind of a mixed bag. So those folks that have low flow toilets and faucets and such like that, it's probably won't help them much. Honestly, it'd probably hurt. And I don't mean hurt in a bad, in a super bad way. But it will likely result in additional readings going through their meter that weren't being picked up before. So it could mean extra cost. For those who have issues with leaks that have gone undetected, I think this will help them and will help to reduce their bills. So we, it kind of varies. I think there's a give and take in that regard.
And by, will it cost them more or less? Is, I meant by getting a loan or doing an in-house something, raising rates?
So if we were to do the, if we were to get a loan, that, that four to five percent, yes. I think we'd have to evaluate whether we, we would have to evaluate how to pay that back. That could mean rate increases. That could mean operational changes in order to, to make that payment. So I couldn't say with certainty there. If we were to do this in-house, we would use the, essentially the existing funding authorization for various projects that are now being funded by ARPA funds potentially to take care of this. So I can say there would be no rate increase to consumers as a result of that option.
Thank you.
If we do this in-house, will we be able to eliminate the third party bill, people reading the meters?
Yes.
Okay. And will we still be able to use some of the funds that may be coming from the state for that?
Yes, there's. It depends on kind of the timeline as far as how fast we, we are able to get the meters. So certainly if, if we go to get these meters at twenty five hundred meters, twenty six hundred meters is a lot. They may not have that supply completely on hand today. And so, yes, we, we still have the potential to leverage state dollars if that comes down the road. But I, I couldn't say this certain.
So if we waited two weeks, you would be able to read the bill and know more about it, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. So we had the internal, the internal fund that we did for something else a while back. Is that paid off yet?
We did an interfund loan to fund the construction of this facility?
Yes.
No, that was a 10 year loan, which, of which we were in the middle of.
Yes, third year. And then option three says that we can take the money out of the general fund, which we always have trouble with the general fund. That doesn't make much sense to me. And the wastewater fund, we, we're trying to put a new wastewater plant in. That doesn't make much sense to me. I, I don't know, I don't know how we're going to do this. And I'm not, definitely not to loan. I, I don't know how we're going to get this done unless we just continue to do it the way it is. I know it's a big deal. I do, I know. Just don't come to my house. But I, I just, I, I don't know how, I just don't know how we can logically do this.
So what we're, what we're saying in those options as far as either using general fund dollars to, to primarily purchase or initially purchase or wastewater funds to initially purchase is that this, the way we can set this up is that we would be able to pay off that loan by the 2023 fiscal year. Which as fast as time goes, really that's just next. So from a timing perspective, say we were to use the wastewater funds for this purpose. We would be able to pay this, the interfund loan off in time before we're even finished with the construction. So it would not hurt our project at all. As far as the general fund is concerned, essentially it's just, it's a short term loan to leverage our ability to buy these now and pay it off as fast as possible. And replenish the funds that we, that we take.
Any other questions? Can't council directive.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I move that we do option three, direct staff, staff to purchase needed meters to complete the change out project and bring an interfund loan forth at the next meeting.
Second.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Counselor Gorley.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Counselor Richards. Mayor Mahler.
Aye. Let the record show we have five ayes with two nays.
May I follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Good.
Which one are you going to use, the general fund or the wastewater fund?
Might just give the council that decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
Multiple options.
Next fiscal year, 2021, end of year report.
Well, we've begun our new fiscal year, and so we try to give you a closeout report of what we've done. So we'll turn this right back over to Brandon. He's back. This begins on page one thirty five of your council packet.
This, I just have good news to deliver. Twenty twenty one was by no means a normal year. But with that, we saw a year in which our citywide revenues were up. Particularly in the form of property taxes and our overall expenditures were within what we had budgeted for the year. So what we've done is, is what I put together for you is a memo and kind of our same orderly update that you've seen in the past. But specifically I'll hit a few points. Property taxes, we finished eight point six percent above of what we had, just about three hundred fifty eight thousand dollars. Two things there. One is we saw reduced compression. We had budgeted for eighteen percent compression. And what we saw over the course of the years, we were down to fifteen percent. And specifically we saw less in the form of delinquencies. So when we first did our budget back in March of 2020, we'd set a higher delinquency rate, not knowing what exactly would, would come out of the pandemic. But what we saw is what we anticipated. So extra revenue there. Most of those revenues, quite honestly, police and library. So those remain in those funds for them to use for either capital purchasing or operational needs of damage. On the service charges side, we did see a reduction overall in, in what we had initially planned for sixteen point four percent. But we had some happy points, I guess, in that in, that we saw some additional planning fee revenue. We saw some additional STCs. It was a council took action on STCs this last, within the last six months, really. And so we are starting to see the, at the end, tail end of the fiscal year, we started to see some of those increases in STCs. But as a result of the STC decision, we had quite a run on folks wishing to pay their STCs at the existing rates before walking in the new ones. So we saw a boom there that hopefully translates into additional construction. On the utility revenue side, we really got close on that budget. We were down point two percent. And we had budgeted five point six million and utility revenue came in at five point five eight million. So really no, nothing lost there, quite honestly. Happy to report that that, even through the pandemic, surprisingly to us, really, that did not take an overall hit. Gas tax revenue, this one is, as you heard at the last council meeting, one of the most surprising for us. So we knew going into the fiscal year that we would have a reduced budget. As such, we had reduced by one FTE and, and made some operational changes to an order, in order to account for that. Our actual receipts came in pretty close to what we had budgeted. But the silver lining in the gas tax side is that didn't come in until July, but the city saw a hundred forty six thousand dollars in additional revenues deposited in this month of July. That actually put us above what we had anticipated for the 2021 fiscal year. So that fund is back to normal, I would say. The state of Oregon is anticipating that, you know, folks are out driving a lot right now. Gas taxes are back to, we'll call them pre-pandemic levels. And we, as you all took action on last time, we have restored that FTE, the gas tax fund. And I know they're searching for that person right now and are extremely grateful for that. So thank you. Lastly, other revenue, this one is the one that looks like I swung at a fence and clearly missed. But the other revenue included seven million dollars in revenues for wastewater treatment plant. As you're all well aware, that project didn't quite go off on the same timeline that we had hoped for. When we established the budget, we had budgeted every dime available for the wastewater treatment plant project in anticipation of at least getting started on the construction. And that didn't happen. The revenues from the state are reimbursement based, so we didn't bring in that revenue because we didn't have the expenditures to match it. So while that revenue line is way down compared to what we had budgeted for, it's some good news on the other side in that we didn't spend the dollars. On the personnel side, we had budgeted five point six million. Actual expenditures reached five point four million, which is a thirty point two percent savings from the 2020 fiscal year. But still right near where we had budgeted. So our overall expenditure on our personnel. On the materials and service side, you all are aware of the spending freeze that the city manager had put in place at the beginning kind of of the pandemic. We, the city manager released that spending freeze in November, December of 2020. And as any normal finance department sees, it was like a rush and the sea gates had been opened. And in came all of our materials and capital expenditures. So we actually finished the fiscal year, seven thousand dollars under budget on materials and service spending. So at that target pretty close. So all in all, a good year, under budget on the expenditure side, over budget on the revenue side. All of those funds will go to offset potential fee increases in the future. Property taxes are what they are. You all have already adopted the budget for the 2022 fiscal year. And it's way too early to tell what property taxes look like yet. We're still waiting for this information from the county assessor. Did go out this last summer or this current summer and, and do some reassessing that they tried to do on us on a regular basis. So we could see give more of a change than we had anticipated again in our property tax revenues. But we did try to account for reduced compression again this year. Really have to see where we land out, but good news all around. We all agree. Before I finish my piece, I do want to highlight that in front of you are the copies, the physical copies of the 2020 fiscal year audit hanging out in my office for a little bit. But it also has a letter that the auditor usually write for you. No major findings in this audit, which was, which is good news as always. The one thing that they did highlight is reconciliations. But those have made, that we have made steps for that improvement. And so you will not see those on the next audit for the 2021 year, which I think happens late September, early October, they come out again. And we will make the December 31 deadline this year. So.
To a certain extent, it's understandable because of COVID.
Sure. We, we need to get on top of it anyways, but yes, definitely things are different during.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Brandon. Nothing other. First reading. Second reading, request to council action, zone map amendment of sweet home sanitation by title only.
Ordinance bill number six for 2021 ordinance number and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Any questions, council? Council directive to move to third reading.
So moved as recommended.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Richards. Mayor Mahler.
Aye, let the record show you have seven ayes, no nays. Approval moving this for third and final reading on August twenty-fourth council meeting. Reports of committees, anything to be brought up?
Mr. Mayor, I have my orientation with the Y youth advisory council on August twenty-fifth.
Do you have any lot of kids?
I don't know. They just got their packets.
You can see. Anything else?
We have a group going tomorrow to check out a facility and see how that might fit our needs. This is for the AdHawk Health Committee. And then we may be bringing something to the council in the next meeting.
Anything else? Okay. Reports to City officials, mayor report, if I were mayor, contest winner, Madeline Coleman. As everyone, she went and received her award and she got her big payday. Counselor Coleman, you wanna share anything with that?
Well, she was quite surprised since we hadn't told her until the announcement that she received an award. So, yeah, she just really enjoyed that.
I actually seen her today, and she was grinning from ear to ear, and she was gleaming, so it was pretty cool. I asked her if she spent all that money yet. She says, not yet. It was pretty cool. So congratulations to her again. That was, she did a great job.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Was her little poster put up in our lobby and maybe needs to come back for a little bit?
I, I agree.
I can totally arrange that.
Yeah, she was even smiling even bigger than that today when I seen her. So anyway, pretty cool. City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, long-awaited start of a new era in our library. Megan Daisy will join our team as our new library services director. Megan will come to us from the city of Puyallup. But before you start moaning about another Washingtonian coming into town, Megan actually grew up in North Bend, and her family actually has roots in Sweet Home. Her mother used to actually volunteer at the library when it was in the basement of the old city hall. So she has ties and, and, and family in the area as well. We're really excited. I don't think I've ever had a more glowing reference, group of references when I've done a check. The city manager of Puyallup was just extremely complimentary and a bit disappointed. He had Megan Tab to be their next library services director. So we're excited for Megan to come on. I know the staff at the library is excited. They've been a, a little bit. That's what I'm looking for. Lonely down there? I've, I tried really hard to get down there at least once a week to meet with them and talk to them, but there are certainly weeks where that didn't occur. And, and I need to publicly acknowledge Joy, Diane, and Sarah for their work over these past several months. They've, they've done a tremendous job working with very little direction, quite frankly, holding down the fort. They give amazing customer service to people that, that come in there and, and use those services. And they've done a really fantastic job, so. But we're excited to get Megan in and see what she can do for us and, and hopefully kind of take us to a whole nother level. Earlier today, several members of our executive team met with Senator Merkley, both her local staff and a rural policy staff member. We also met with some members of the regional solutions team, which is DEQ Business Oregon and the USDA. We discussed all of the barriers to small rural cities in order to be able to access federal funds. Talked about what those issues are. They were super great to talk to and, and and share our concerns and what we've run into and, and just talk to them about those things. So we're excited. We also learned, as we got into some more details about some of our needs that we've really identified lately throughout this latest budget process and kind of where we're at. We did learn of a few other programs we weren't aware of that we, we might be able to access to help us with a couple of our needs. So that was exciting, and we'll continue to track those down. As Counselor Gorley mentioned, there's seven people from our community, including two counselors going to Walla Walla to study their efforts to deal with their homeless population. The interesting thing about Walla Walla is all the customers are happy with what's happening there. Not just the homeless advocates, but the community, the downtown businesses are ecstatic about what they're doing. So we're hoping to learn some key points there and hopefully bring some of those back with us to implement as, as we begin to work with our homeless facility, which has been mandated by the state of Oregon, as well as some some other court cases. So we'll begin tackling that. Last Friday, I attended a meeting hosted by Senator Gerard and Rep. Kate in Lebanon for community leaders. There were a couple elected officials, but special district fire chiefs were there, another city manager. And it was really nice to get together, probably gonna continue to do that with them on a quarterly basis. Saturday, we had a couple counselors that attended. Three of you attended Senator Gerard and Rep. Kate's town hall here in Sweet Home. I would guess there's about thirty people there. There's a great turnout, some really good exchange between them and the community, and I think it went really, really well. And as we discussed today, we heard the governor is going to begin implementing some COVID precautions again. It's probably gonna include mask-wearing and indoor public spaces. There are a lot of feelings about this and, and people on both sides of the fence. And we're, we're gonna go ahead and set that town hall meeting. We're gonna let everybody feel heard about that. We'll discuss what the city can and cannot do as a response to, to the governor's mandates. And, and we'll just do the best we can to get through. I, I'd like to prophesize a little bit here. No, prophesize is not the word, but yeah, no, I'm not gonna prophesize. I'm gonna get, I'd like to get up on my soapbox a little bit if the council will indulge me. And I think what's important that we need to remember is we're Sweet Home, and we're all Sweet Homeians first, before we're anything else. And we have a history of stepping up, helping each other and supporting each other in tough times. I was a little disgusted at what happened at the school board meeting last night. Some people acted very unfairly to a group of people who, like you, give of their time and their talent, and in many cases, your treasure, as we refer to it. And several of you donate what little fee you get to other causes in our community. So you're doing what you do for free. We need to remember who we are and that we are neighbors. We all go to the same churches. Our kids go to school together. Our kids play sports together. We see each other in local stores. And we need to remember that first and foremost. And we may not like what's going on, but it doesn't mean that we aren't Sweet Home first, and we're all about Sweet Home. I apologize if I've overstepped my boundaries, but I think that's very important to, to understand. And our school board members and the superintendent and the executive staff that was there last night did not deserve to be treated how they were treated, in my opinion. I do not speak on behalf of anybody else. Thank you for indulging me.
Well said, Mr. Towery. Anyway, moving on, any directors' reports? Any questions of our directors? City attorney, you have anything? Okay, does council business good of order?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Your temperatures are going to be above a hundred on Saturday. Are we going to have cooling center?
So the last forecast we looked at did not include Saturday. It was Wednesday, Thursday, in which case we have been making arrangements. City Hall will be open, the library will be open their normal hours, and the police department would also be available to people. We can reassess that. If the forecast includes Friday and Saturday, then we'll look to make some arrangements.
I would be available to help on Saturday if necessary.
Thank you.
Thank, anything else? We'll go ahead and adjourn at eight forty.